Where are you joining us from?
Oh, I'm here from Iran.
Iran? Great.
Yeah. 4:30 in the morning.
Oh, wow. Well, that's very impressive.
But it's good. Yeah. Really good, actually.
Thanks for joining. Are you in Tehran or?
Thank you for the session. Uh, close, close. Uh, 60, 70 miles from capital, yeah.
Well, look at that. Only three of us. Lots of people watching the YouTube videos, but not so many people joining us live. I guess it's hard to maintain the consistency. Well, thank you for joining. It's, uh, do you have anything you wanted to talk about, or shall we keep going?
Oh, uh, you asking me?
Ah, both of you.
Ah, okay. I think you were about to finish the glyph, yeah? I think you finished the glyph.
Let's go have a look.
And then?
Uh, share my screen. Um, so I guess we're doing this one, were we? The rest?
Okay.
Were we in the middle of something? Let's see. I guess not. Is this different to Upshow? Or is this like a bigger version of it or something?
Oh, it's Upshows.
That is Upshow?
Yeah.
We've already done that, right?
Uh, I think so, yeah. Yeah, I think so.
I'm just gonna type help, just in case it's some weird, different version of it. Oh. What just happened? That's strange. Huh. Okay. Never mind. Um, and have we definitely not done iota underbar? I guess if we did, it would have been probably here. Okay, dialogue, language elements. I'm trying to remember what iota underbar does. Where interval index? Let's put it next to iota. As well. Okay, so I'm gonna guess that it is shift i. Correct. Iota underbar. Okay. Uh. Okay. All right, we've already got row at this point, so that's good. So, B mat is 2 by 3. All right, so, um, iota underbar, I guess, pretty clearly is showing us the locations of the binary truths. Uh, and more than that, it is replicating them the number of times according to what the number is. Doesn't work on negative numbers. Doesn't work on floats. Okay. Seems easy enough. And then for matrices, it's telling us the coordinates of each of the binary truths. It would be easier if this was printed out. Row 1, column 2, 2, 1, 2, 3. Cool. So, anything else I should add, or anything? Does that make sense? What's this one? Uh. So, we won't put it in our notebook, but we'll try to figure out what this is. Iota, row omega. Oh, okay, so.
Index of that.
Oh, Isaac's here. Hi, Isaac. I see. So iota iota row of omega is the indices that, yeah, correspond to that to that array. And, okay, so, um, that's very important. That's a function, that's a function. Function operator. Function. Okay, so that's a function. That's a function, that's a function. So this is a fork with three functions. Does that sound right? I'm right? Great. So we go row of this. And then we go slash over comma. Now, there's no reason to use over, right? Because it's monadic, so we could just use jot and get the same thing. Yes. Um, so first, uh, so, is this? The comma's not necessary, is it? Ah ha, it's not. I guess this is in case it's like a scalar or something. Okay. And then can anyone remember what slash does?
So, the replicate? I guess that's the monadic, right? Uh, oh, reduce.
Monadic slash is not defined. Oh, so. Wait. Uh, wait, how is this working? Because monadic slash is not defined. That's a syntax error. Oh, no, no, no. It's dyadic, because there's an omega here. Okay. So, it's dyadic. Uh. Okay, we've got a, okay, we've got a fork slash iota row. And a dyadic fork uh applies the outside functions to both outside arguments? Is it? Uh, here. Yep. So this is a dyadic fork. And it applies the outside functions to both outside arguments.
So were they just recreating the monadic iota underbar?
Um, let's see. So this is gonna be... Oh, I see. Um, I think you're right. Um, so the reason this works is that slash means replicate. And the left-hand side tells you how many things, times to replicate the right-hand side. Um, omega slash omega. Uh. Okay, so there's omega slash omega. So that's during the replicate. And then you've got row of omega, as we discussed. Okay, and then dyadic iota. Dyadic. Index of. So. Wait, what did I do wrong? Oh, um, it's, uh, it's this row is applied to the left and the right. Uh. So it's omega row omega. Is that right? Oh. So I could put parentheses here, right? No. Okay, so I'm parsing it wrong. Oh, I'm parsing it wrong because of the amegas. This is not in parentheses, so it's not a fork. So I'm totally wrong. Um, so we actually have to be careful about precedence here. Without parentheses, it's gonna be, there's actually no operators in this version. So we bind most tightly on the right. So this is actually simply gonna be row of omega, which is 4. And then iota, which is 1, 2, 3, 4. So it's just gonna be that. Which does give us the answer. Okay. Gotta be careful of precedence. And I guess you could do that tacitly by doing um jot. And then what Adam calls selfie. Oh, look at that!
Awesome.
Yay! Okay. That was a bit of a digression. A single line in the docs to say this is how you can define iota underbar. We made that a bit faster, but I guess it'd be less fun. Okay.
Yeah.
Iotic. Iota underbar. Thank you for your fast cattle stuff, by the way, Isaac. I it was something I wanted for myself. I think a lot of people are gonna find it really useful.
Yeah, I hope so. I'm now trying to write with GitHub Actions. I'm trying to get it scheduled so it'll run and update if any of the libraries are, if any of the libraries are, um,
A great idea.
Not the latest, it'll just update. I mean, then I can um, have a big repository that people can just point to, so they don't have to upload their own unless they want to.
Now, this one I remember doing with Claire. It's a bit of an odd one. Okay. So. Hey, I, you. Oh, there's two things here. What's it doing? Okay, so the number of results is the same as the number on the right-hand side. Let's start with a numeric one, because I think I know this one. So what the 246 does is it creates a number of groups. Uh, the first group it creates is less than 2. And then 2 to less than 4, and then 4 to less than 6, and then greater than or equal to 6. And so less than 2 will become 0. 2 to less than 4 will become 1. 4 to less than 6 will become 2. Greater than or equal to 6 will become 3. So that's why 1 is less than 2, so it becomes 0. 2 is um 2 to less than 4, so it becomes 1, and so forth. So just tell, so these define breakpoints. And then it just applies these to those breakpoints and gives you the results. But be very careful, because it's a bit weird that it starts at 0 instead of 1. Which, when I asked about this on the APL Discord, Marshall Lockburn told me he considers this an off-by-one error in APL. Although somebody else pointed out it does have some convenient properties. Uh, so you can think of it as like, the group number 1 is the bit defined by when you actually get greater than or equal to 2. So 0 is like less than the minimum value. Does that make sense? Okay, so this is exactly the same thing, but for letters, these letters are in alphabetical order. So D is between A and E, so it's 1. Y is later than U, so it's 5.
Gotcha.
Okay, rank 2 arrays. I don't know. Interval index works with major cells. Okay, so this is one of these ones with broadcasting built in. Wait, is it? Higher rank left argument. It compares subarrays NY, which is the right argument with the major cells of X. I'm not quite following. Uh. What are subarrays of this? I guess 3, 3 is a subarray.
So if it's not broadcasting, length just 3 or 3, 3, 3 would give errors, right?
But what if we did uh 2 rows, 2 columns of 3, 3, 3, 5? Yeah, so it's this is subarray 1, I guess. This is subarray 2. So this is the same as, as this result concatenated with this result. How does it decide that 3, 3 is 1? I guess it's looking through here to find like a row that contains what exactly?
Would 0, 3 give you the same result?
No. I think it's like, it's trying to, it's basically like looking for the first... Okay, I think the issue is, um, it's comparing column 1 and then column 2. And column 2 would only matter if there was a tie. So I think if we went um okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 3, 5. So 3, 3 is not bigger than 3, 4. 3, 4 is then 3, 5 is higher still, and then 4, 5 is off the end. Oh, greater than or equal to is always gonna be there. Yeah, so it's saying, uh, what row would this slot into by first of all, making sure that it's greater than or equal to the first column? And greater than or equal to the second column. So this one would have to go here, because the second is not greater than or equal to.
But if either of them are greater than the second, then it would slot them after, right?
Yeah, which I think is I think it's exactly the same as doing 12, 34, 35. Right? That's basically the same thing, right? Same results. Okay. Cool. And if people want to learn more about this, they've got quite extensive examples, which I suspect means that this is fairly important. I guess in, you know, anytime you're trying to place a continuous number into a bunch of buckets, you would use this kind of approach. Like plotting groups or something like that. Okay.
histograms.
Molly, you're very quiet. I can't quite hear you properly.
Oh, uh, yeah, my mic was long ways away. Uh, histograms? Yeah.
Yeah. Uh. Circle. Okay, I wonder if circle should go in the basic math section? Because that's circle functions. I can't imagine we're gonna need other stuff. Much. Bit of a big topic, I guess. Circle functions. Uh, circle. Here it is. Right. Circle. How do we write circle? Hey, I just remembered, I've actually installed the APL keyboard. I don't need this thing anymore. Oh, I guess it's useful to see what button to press anyway. Okay, so it's oh, so I can just press Alt O. Oh, maybe I need to do this. Alt O. There we go. Cool. Alt O. Which I guess is just called circle. Yep. Circle. Monadic circle. High times. So I guess that means we could just go monadic circle 1. And can we do like that? Yeah, okay. Seems easy enough. Okay, nothing weird. Oh. Fun. Uh. Euler's identity. So, I pi I eta the pi I. Yeah. Um. Euler's identity. Although at this point, we haven't done any kind of trainy thing, so maybe we should do that in two steps. Uh. Pi I equals pi I. Oops, what did I do wrong? Oh, it's not exact. Is that what it's saying? Something weird going on here? Have we done something weird? So this is. Pi I. This is pi I. And then this is either the power of that. Yeah, that's definitely pi I. That's strange. Oh, I see. It's minus one plus ten to the negative sixteen. I, which is basically zero. So I think what's happened is. My guess is that. This is special case or something in APL, dialogue APL. To remove the annoying floating point residue leftover bit here. Basically, this is close enough to zero I. For some reason, when we do it all in one go, it's. Gets it exactly right. Alright, well, maybe we won't show that then. Okay. Diatic. Circle function. Yeah. There isn't really a short way to do this, so. I'm inclined to just provide a link. Um, but basically, the idea is you. Put something on the left. And whatever you put on the left defines what function you get. And cos is two. And presumably, we can do both. Yep. And can we do it to multiple things? What does that do? I'm not quite clear on what happens when. Alpha is. An array. Uh, oh, I guess it's, well, no, okay, that makes sense. So. If we do. Pi. Pi. Okay, so that's basically zero, zero. Or maybe point five. Okay. So then what happens if we? And what does that do? Because you kind of, I was expecting four results. I was expecting sign and cause because. If we do. Sign and causes zero. Or. Sign and cause. Of half pi. So why do you? So what are the two numbers being? Here.
I, I think you're applying each function to each of the, or sorry. Each straight function to each of the ones in the right side vector. And I need better vocabulary.
You think it's broadcasting. Over the scalars. Yes.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, right. That's exactly what happens by default in APL, right? Is a scalar broadcast over an array. But if they're both arrays, then they're just broadcast to each other. Yes, yes, yes. You're exactly right. Okay. Great. Okay. Fine. Okay. Element of, we should put with our kind of set related stuff. Which I guess is where. Up and down she were. Cool. Epsilon. One of the epsilon. Means enlist because ML fast is one, I remember. And it's just called epsilon. Yes. Epsilon. My addict. Epsilon. End list. And diatic. Epsilon. Is member. Of. Oh, okay. Can I see what's going on here? So. Matrix. Is two by three. Uh, row iota six. So what it's doing is it's got zero, that's got a matrix from one to six. And it's got a array with seven and eight, that's got a scale of nine. And it just flattens them and sticks them all together, flatten concatenate. I wonder if that does that for. More axes? Yes, it does. Seems easy enough. Uh, okay, so this is interesting. Yeah, so this is two by three. But this is a single, this is, oh, sorry, and then this is. Ranks, this is a shape three. So I guess this is. Doing the broadcasting thing, kind of it's. Applying it to each. Row. All the elements in rappel order.
So this flattens out enough to the raise?
Um. Well. Yeah. Guess so. Yeah, it is. Uh, and also higher rank arrays. But yeah, this last one's interesting in that it's. Combining these different shapes. And actually. We've ended up with less ones than we started with, right? So it's doing something slightly weird here. Oh, no, wait, am I doing this right? Okay, now I'm reading it wrong. So actually. Yeah, sorry. I forgot. I got confused by the precedence. Yeah, so. Even though there's no space there, we have to remember this is actually that, right? Okay, yeah, so it's just flattening it out. So it's not weird. Cool. Yeah, so you're going to be careful to remember that although it prints this like a word nine, it's actually, these are just characters. N, I, N, and A. That's why this shape is thirteen. Okay. Member of. A, B, C, four. Is that? Is it an, okay, so is A, B, C an element? Of this set? No, it's not. Is four an element of this set? Yes, it is. So we get zero, one. And then this is just saying, is. Each element of the matrix, an element of, is set, and it puts them in the same order, so. One is not an element, two is an element, three is not an element, so forth. Makes sense.
So if you. If you kind of reversed that and did. Like one, two, three, epsilon, Matt. Would it be searching like the major cells of if Matt was on the. The right hand side? Yeah, so it's saying. Okay, so still looking cell wise. It's not looking at major cells. Saying is six anywhere in that matrix? I think, and is two anywhere in the matrix?
Yeah, exactly. So I think the right, the rank of the right hand side seems totally. Meaningless.
Okay.
It's just traded as a set.
I, I also tried with two matrices and got the same behavior that you would expect there.
Cool. Thanks, Molly. Alright. Epsilon underbar. Just diatic. Okay, where is A in? Oh, is A, no, uh.
Is B in, um, A and A is A and A and A is, and I think it's going.
Okay.
Wait, no, because N is in both, and that would be zero. And that's zero, so it should be. So I was wrong.
Huh. Santa compelling.
Yeah, it worked for the first two.
It finds occurrences of X within Y. Oh. Okay. The hall of X. Anna is here. And Anna is here. Okay, and we're going to try to give the easy examples. Oops. There we go. Yeah. Okay. How do we create this thing? X. Is. Okay, X one. Is. Two by two. Oh, one, one, oh. X two. Is. Four by four. Oh, one, oh, oh, one, one, oh, oh, one, oh, one. Oh, I see. That's what we want. Wait, what's? Oh, that's X and Y. Never mind. X. Y. Alright. Oh, I see, so it's finding where is like this, oh, where is this like one, one diagonal? And you can find it here. Here and here. Since they're the ones. Okay. Makes sense?
Yeah, I think the, the, the API wiki seems to have a. Kind of a. I think a better explanation of it, but. And sorry, maybe you guys already talked about that, I've been, I've been in and out of the discussions.
Nope, we hadn't, thanks, buddy. Okay? Great. Why is there an N here? Is that actually the letter N? Oh, no, let's do the other shoe on that one. And children we've done.
First two might go under the math, I think.
Might go in math?
Yeah, I think there's the circle star is. Log and natural log. And the domino looking thing is matrix division and matrix inversion, I think.
Okay, matrix we're gonna have to do after we've done rank. Certainly log we can do. Circle star. Oh, that's easy. Do you know how to type it?
I think it is backtick star thing.
Oh. Or alt star now to me. Not a great rendering here. I think rather than writing that, I'd rather write. A to the power of one. Cool. There we go. Domino quad divide. Matrix inverse and matrix division by. Okay. But I'll write them down and then we can put them somewhere. And how do I take this one, Molly, no? Or anybody?
I believe it's. The plus. So it's the same as division, but with the shift key, I think.
That one?
Um. I think so, that doesn't quite look right, does it?
That was, sorry, is that, sorry, that was alt shift slash?
Alt shift plus or?
Oh, shift plus, sorry. Cool. Is there some way to get a? What's a good, easy way to get an identity matrix?
I did that in a blog post.
Oh.
Well, I, I used it, I don't know that I. Here was. I'll put in the chat when my identity function was.
Why is this not working? Have I got it the wrong way around? I think I do, actually. Yes. Oh, there's a few things happening in the chat, I noticed. I guess it's fine anyway, we can see easily enough, it's. That's the invert, that's the identity. Oh. Okay. Eric? I'm not really sure what matrix division. Means. Twenty of here. Now.
Oh, I think you're using X instead of the dash.
How do I do that? Okay. I haven't quite heard that expression, matrix division before, but it makes sense. It's just the opposite of matrix multiplication. Oh, cool, those pseudo inverses as well. If there's more rows and columns, the least squares result. So I think that's just what's called the pseudo inverse. It's neat. Okay, linear regression on complex numbers, why not? Lots of things to study there. Alright. Probably a good time to stop. I thought we've done dot. Or have we only done it in? This one situation? Or do we not do it at all?
I'm not sure that we've done it.
Oh, no, that's bad, because I've definitely referred to it.
Yeah, I think we talked about it a bit.
Okay, well, let's pop it underneath the rank.
But I don't know that we.
Linear algebra. Let's quickly do this then. Before we finish. Dot. Which is a operator, oh, it's an operator. So we cut to it here. Let's put it over here. Okay. Dot. Alright. Okay, so this is a dot product. One times four plus two times five plus three times six. This is. Interesting. So this is some and, isn't it? So this is three equals three and three equals three and three equals three and three equals three. If I did this, it would be zero. That's cool. Example.
When I was playing with this inner product, I was thinking that using it with the up and down styles for min and max was could be useful as well.
Right, go on, I can see where you're heading.
So you could. I'm reading my own blog post, trying to figure out what it means, so.
Oh, let's maybe just put it in the. Forum thread after we do it. And so then they had, oh, yeah, then they got the special case. Actually. Didn't we do that in? The competition thing? Because we were doing that, oh, or maybe we just played with it, but we ended up getting rid of it. I remember we talked about outer product for that gene example. But yeah, I think I messed it up and didn't quite get it working. So that's fine. Alright. I think that's it. Thanks, all. Good to see you.
Bye.
Alright, thanks, bunch.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks. Bye.